All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power, one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Good evening and welcome to the 177th regular meeting of the Greenfield Town Council. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcast. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify me at this time. Anyone? Except for the mayor. Good, Clerk, will you do a roll call of members?
Counselor Stein?
Here.
Counselor Logak?
Here.
Counselor Alice?
Present.
Counselor Pytham?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Here.
Counselor Gilmore? Counselor Wheeler? Counselor Neo?
Here.
Counselor Leonovit?
Here.
Counselor Mass?
Here.
Counselor Stempel?
Present.
Vice President Grifith?
Here.
This is voluntary, if you'd like, you could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
There are no Town Council meeting minutes to approve, so we're gonna go right to the public comment. I'm wondering if somebody could, thank you, thank you. Could, thank you David. Could somebody please time for me, I don't have a cellphone up here with me, oh, the Clerk will time for me. So, this is public comment, you can come up and speak on anything you like. The maximum is three minutes, and so I will have to ask you to stop at three minutes unless you're in the middle of a sentence. So, Mary Ellen Calderwood, and please state for the record your address and your name.
Hello, my name is Mary Ellen Calderwood, 82 Sanderson Street, Greenfield. I'm here to read two letters from residents who could not be here. I will try to get through it in three minutes. Ms. Renaud, Council President. I had intended to deliver this testimony in person at this week's meeting, but due to illness, I am not confident I'll be able to attend the meeting. Therefore, I am forwarding my testimony in hopes it can be made part of the record. I wish to speak in opposition to the mayor's proposal to privatize Greenfield trash and recycle services. Privatizing taxpayer-funded city services is an idea promoted by those who think that government should be run like a for-profit business because it is more efficient and saves money. The reality is just the opposite. Government, especially local government, is a non-for-profit service organization funded by tax dollars. Introducing profit into this equation almost always results in less service and higher costs to the city and taxpayers. The claims of vast savings by privatizing services generally turn into, turn out to be an overblown or nonexistent, sorry. Contractors bid low to get the business, then begin raising fees because their bid does not cover the cost of providing the service, let alone provide them with the profit they need. What happens when a contractor cannot perform? What recourse does a taxpayer have when the contractor wants to increase fees? This is a bad idea and not a substitute for vital city services like trash and recycle services, and which will not benefit the taxpayer. Before approving such departure from current practice, I ask the council to do a more thorough cost-benefit analysis and consider rejecting this proposal. Submitted by Tanya Avery, 106A Laurel Street, Greenfield. Second letter, dear councilors and other officials of Greenfield, we are very concerned to hear that Greenfield is considering privatizing some services of Greenfield, or at least the mayor is planning to do that. We sure hope he can't and won't make any decision like this alone. This will affect our citizens of Greenfield for a long time to come. We have an excellent DPW right now, they are dedicated and come through even when there are hard circumstances like weather. The workers are dedicated to serving the town, they are friendly and respectful. They take time to answer questions as needed. Our transfer station is wonderful, and we are sure our services are a model in the Commonwealth. Why should our town's resources go to private business instead of staying in Greenfield? We have read lots of stories where that has gone very badly for folks. Why fix it if it's not broken? Very wise advice. There is no reason for some private people to make a profit from our trash when it already is so elegantly and smoothly running. Just look at Montague and the recent storm. First, we read that the mayor had decided to privatize all the services related to trash recycling transfer station in Greenfield. Then we read another piece in the paper that Montague citizens are disgruntled about the disruption of services in the recent storms. Montague services have been privatized, and there's not the same kind of accountability to the citizens that we have now in Greenfield. Greenfield workers who care about this town and services in a personal way made sure that roads, trash, recycling, all went smoothly during and after those storms. We are unlikely to get that service from workers in a for-profit business, and we strongly suspect that it is a sideways attempt to break the union. The union assures that our workers get treated fairly in a way that is also fair to the town. It is very transparent now. If it goes privatized, we will have very little access to any real accountability. We do not want to cut services or cut workers. Our workers of the DPW are valuable resources in the town. Again, don't try to fix something that isn't broken. There are many examples where privatizing has led to more headaches, problems, and cost more money. Keep Greenfield in Greenfield. Diane Clancy, Susan Elkin, 32 Abbott Street, Greenfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. David Cohen?
David Cohen, 335 Green River Road, Greenfield. I'm also here to speak about the proposal or the pending action to privatize our trash pickup and recycling. I think this is, it's very serious to do away with town resources, and something that is a core part of the town. We, you know, we collect a lot of money from the citizens in Greenfield, some $400,000 a year to help pay for the trash pickup and the recycling, and I think it's run very efficiently. So I don't think this is something that can just be done by one person. I would question the legality of that. I would think the Town Council should hold some public hearings on this idea. We want to look at, you know, how much profit are these companies expecting to make off this? In other cases where I've dealt with this, in the town of Montague, when, some years ago, when they were talking about privatizing the wastewater treatment plant, what it turned out was the company was taking 10% of the budget off the top that went into their pocket as profits. And then they expected the town, also, the town was still responsible for any capital improvements that had to be made. So I think we have to look at this carefully. What happens, as other people have already raised, what recourse do we have if our garbage trucks are sold off? And all the contracts I've seen on this, they all insist that the town sell off their equipment. Why do they do that? They want to make it difficult for the town to go back to doing their own trash pickup and without making huge capital investments when you do away with the trucks. So I think we have to look at this seriously. I think if we look at the state, some 25 years ago, the state passed the Pacheco Law, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that right, that set up some stringent guidelines on how the state had to look at privatization. And they did that because there were so many examples running around that time where private contractors would take over something, and the services were worse, and they paid the workers less, which put more of a tax burden on us. If people have to go on public assistance, have to get the state-provided health insurance, we, the taxpayers, have to pay for that. So there were stringent guidelines set up. I think the town of Greenfield should look at those. So I'd hope that the Town Council plays an active role. I hope the mayor will come out and present his rationale for this and the facts and figures, because I think we'd all like to see, when we're talking about $700,000 in savings, where that is really gonna come from. Is that gonna come from less services? Is it gonna come from paying the workers less? I think they're very serious questions that face the town of Greenfield. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Sarah Ahern?
Sarah Ahern, 15 Abbott Street. Here to voice my opinion about the privatization of the trash and recycling.
Sarah, excuse me, could you please speak up a little bit?
Sure. Is that better? Okay, so my first thought is, the individuals that currently are employed by our town government will lose their jobs. These are low-income, middle-income families that the employees may be the sole breadwinner. That concerns me, how that would impact our families that are already strapped. Number two, potential loss of revenue. Maybe we can rethink this, where we could actually make some revenue for the town, keep the money in our community. And thirdly, any agreement that's made with an entity with a price deal, say there is one, could be easily have a timeframe, let's say in three years. Are we looking at paying triple what we pay now? And how's that gonna impact those same low-income, middle-income families? And also, if the town didn't agree with that, you're looking at a potential breach of contract, and that's really messy. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Geismann?
Thank you for the opportunity, my name is Jim Geismann. I live at 64 East Cleveland. We've been in town for a year and a half, love it, great place. I just wanted to share some of my thoughts about privatization, first in terms of background. I've run my own business for 35 years, been trained as a business guy, and...
Excuse me, Jim, could you just pull the mic a little bit closer to you?
Sure, is that any better?
That's better.
Okay, right. You don't want me to start over again. Anyhow, I've, out of the corner of my eye, I've watched privatization and how it plays out when people are privatizing parking, water treatment, highways, and privatization isn't a bad idea. It just doesn't work very well in general. Public ownership is very simple. You pay taxes directly to the city, which, you know, some people may disagree. I think the city has our interests at heart, mostly. If we don't like the way services are delivered, we can vote them out. We can do something. Privatization, which is equally simple. Instead of paying the city directly, we pay a private company, a privatizer, who has its best interests at heart, and it's not accountable to us residents if something goes off the rails. If our needs aren't met now and in the future, why insert a profit-making company between the city and the services that are being provided? Ultimately, we still pay, but we also give up accountability and control. I think privatization has had a long history of failing the people the arrangement's supposed to serve. Taxes don't go down, service delivery doesn't necessarily improve, and city residents can't do anything about it. This is a typical example of, there is no free lunch. Somebody pays. I encourage you to pay attention to the experience of others as we go down this road, and don't make the same mistakes. I'm sure we'll make our own, but let's not repeat the others. Thank you.
Thank you. Margot Jones?
Good evening, I'm Margot Jones from Precinct 5, 28 Chestnut Hill is my house, but I'm also a property owner, downtown commercial property owner, and an architect. And I'm here to support the $529,000 that we're asking for to add to the garage project. I was very fortunate to be chosen as an associated architect for this project, and we've been working with Desmond Associates, the engineers, but they hired us to try to make the garage fit into the downtown commercial area and to be architecturally appropriate. So I can show you some pictures, but we've taken what is basically a really bare-bones concrete parking garage and added a few amenities. If this $529,000 isn't added to the budget, then those amenities are out the window, and in fact, the whole project is in jeopardy of not moving forward. And I just want to say that the project is mostly state-funded, and it's going to improve Greenfield tremendously. I mean, in Northampton, once they built the parking garage there, the commercial entities flowered, and downtown really became the success that it was. And that was, I don't know, 40 years ago, a long time ago. Brattleboro's parking garage has been highly used and generates money. I mean, it's a win-win situation for the downtown, for the courthouse, for the transit center. I mean, a lot of people are gonna be going to New York City, and they'll need a place to park their car that's safe. It will generate funding to pay for the bonds. It's a fiscally sound project, and I just hope that you will approve the $529,000 to add to that budget. We needed it because there were issues in the underground, in the ground. It was bad soil, and we knew that to begin with, but additional things, problems were found. And it was budgeted four years ago, and everything has gone up. So if the original budget had held, we'd be fine, but there's 4% increase in construction costs per year, and that's just the cost of doing business. So, again, I urge that you positively move that transfer of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. David Moscaratolo?
I'd like to first congratulate all the new council members and their new positions.
Thank you. Oh, David, could you state your address, please?
Oh yes, 43 Country Club Road. I'm here representing 207 Greenfield residents. We've started a new group called Stop Spending Greenfield. Folks asked us to change the name and kind of bring it down a little bit, and I didn't want to do that, because I think it's important that the council really spends a lot of time, when they make decisions, to spend multimillion dollars this coming year. Stop Spending Greenfield is a non-political group of concerned citizens working towards more financial stability and sustainability. Services are most important, but as we keep spending, a larger and larger percentage of our yearly budget will be devoted to paying that debt. I think that personally, we are, we really need to look at what a year's vote means. You know, we all want nice buildings, we all want the downtown to look nice, we all want to have great services. But on the slate this year, we're talking multimillion dollars for a new library, for a new fire station, a new safety complex. These are all great projects, but the council has a responsibility to the people in the town. And in the past, it's happened. Councilors have voted for personal reasons. They've voted on party lines. We can't do that. You can't vote for personal reasons, you can't vote on party lines. I started this non-political group so we wouldn't, so all people could join the group that are concerned about taxes going up and about the debt that this town has. So I would urge the councilors that when they make a vote, put aside your personal reasons and put aside your political party reasons, and really look at the true cost of what the project is gonna cost the taxpayers of Greenfield. Because it's not, the burden isn't on us just today. It's on the future, the young families that are moving to town. We can say, yeah, this is great, we're gonna build this certain building, it's gonna cost $10 million, and the state's gonna give us $5 million, but then we have another $5 million to pay, and that could end up being $7 or $8 million by the time we pay it off in 30 or 40 years. So, I started this group, we have 207 people that have joined. I expect a lot more people to join. I have flyers, I'm passing them out, I'm standing on street corners. People need to know that there's a debt, we have debt in Greenfield, and that if we don't start really looking at it closely, it's gonna start affecting our services, maybe five or 10 years down the line. As the debt goes up, the services are gonna drop, and then that means taxes are gonna go up, and that means the households in Greenfield are gonna have to spend more of their hard-earned money for the services. I would urge the council to really look into what projects holistically cost, and not just that it's a great project or it's a pretty project. And I thank you for your time, and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, David. Maria Birch?
And you thought you were getting rid of me, huh? Actually, it's a lot easier to be on this side, because I can speak freely and not have to worry about repercussions. I'd like to, again, welcome all the new...
I'm sorry, Maria, could you just please state your address?
29 Garfield Street.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I'd like to welcome all the new councilors and urge them to listen to the other councilors with experience. I learned a lot in the two years that I served. I've served 35 years in this community, and I learned more in the last two years from hearing from so many people in Greenfield. And it's gonna help me to continue to serve Greenfield. I would, I'd like to share that I have taken the liberty of being the liaison between veterans and of this community and the services that are, the service providers. I have, I want to come to you as many times as possible to bring some of the concerns of the citizens here in Greenfield. I also would like to offer myself as the voice to people who feel that they can't come up... See, two years ago, I couldn't even say two sentences without, you know, it's like, oh, I was so nervous all the time. But I'm getting better. It's because I want to be able to continue to serve Greenfield in any way that I can. I'd like to also emphasize that the council should get more involved with more community service groups. I'd like to thank Scott Cody and the Registry of D's for stepping up and helping provide a community meal this Sunday. It is by teamwork that we can serve Greenfield better. I'm gonna have a lot of other things, there's a lot of issues in this town, and I know it's a big job for all of you sitting on that side. And the only way we're going to find solutions is to become a team. So thank you for your service, and good luck to you.
Thank you, Maria. Dorothy MacGyver?
Good evening, Dorothy MacGyver, 88 Columbus Ave., and I too welcome all the new councilors, and off to a great start. I'm here because I'm opposing the privatization of our trash services. I agree with everything that's been said so far. I'm really concerned about the amount of privatization that's going on in this country and the movement to do even more. And I don't think that's the way to go. I've lived here since 1993, and I've really appreciated our trash service, our DPW. I think they do a fantastic job. And I really would like to have a lot more input from people and a lot of research into this. I spent some time today online, actually looking up privatization of trash services in different communities around the country, and it was just a quick search, but there was a lot of very varied information and a lot of differing opinions depending on the community. Some communities have done it, and they're okay with it, but they're still fairly new at it. They haven't really had a lot of time to process it. Some of them are not satisfied, and they're locked in a contract, and they're kind of stuck with it. The usual situation in most communities is that if there were unionized workers doing the trash pickup, a lot of them were laid off. Sometimes the new company might hire some of them. Sometimes the town might keep some of them, but there were jobs lost. It was hard to get an idea of what these workers were paid, but it seemed like the town employees, in many cases, were paid better. It seemed in a number of communities that the residents paid higher amounts for their trash pickup after the privatization happened than they were before. And then there was the loss of accountability, where towns found they had no oversight over certain things if there were complaints. So I think that you all need to be involved in really looking into this thoroughly and not making a fast decision on it, because, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen down the road, but we know that right next door, we have a community that's not satisfied with what's happening. And so it's not something to take lightly. And so I hope that you will do the research and let this be a decision that is the best for our town. And I don't think this is the way to go, but thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. John Bensinger?
Hi, my name's John Bensinger. I live at 141 Stony Ledge Road in Williamson, Mass. I'm an employee of Skanska USA. We are under contract with you, the town of Greenfield, to act as the OPM on the parking garage. And I've been with the project since late 2015. I'm here to advocate for the moving the money from repurposing the $529,000 to the parking garage. I just want to offer some facts. It's a $10.7 million project as currently constituted. 8.7 of that is a contract with Daniel O'Connell Sons of Holyoke, and that's a signed contract. They've been working on the job since July. We've currently spent approximately $2.7 million of the town's money, and we anticipate that if we were to stop the project, we'd have to spend another to pay off O'Connell, the design consultants, and also to repave the lot to make it suitable for public use again. We have $600,000 of contingency in that $10.7 million. We recommend to our clients typically that they carry between 5 and 10% contingency to deal with unanticipated conditions and changes. So theoretically, we could take that $600,000 out of the project, and we could cut another $100,000 of features from the project to get to that $10 million. We do not recommend that, because that, any change order that comes up moving forward, we'd have to come back to the council, or we'd have to somehow get additional funding to pay for those change orders. We anticipate that we're not gonna need the whole $600,000 to complete the project since we're out of the ground now, so to speak, but the hope is that we can use some of that money to add the architectural features that Margot had talked about previously. The danger of not approving this money and us continuing to move forward is that we're gonna spend additional monies that's gonna have to be funded somehow. If we stop the project right now, I think the town is at risk of mask works coming back and trying to gouge back the money that they've paid you already, and in addition to the monies that we've spent and would need to stop the project. So I think theoretically, the town's at risk for about $3.7 million. I'm glad to meet with any or all of you at some future date to give you more details. All of this work was bid in accordance with Master and Law, Chapter 149 and 149A. It was all, you know, hard bid, so the numbers are the numbers. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, John. Jeffrey Dunn? Jeffrey Dome?
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Dome.
Sorry, Dome.
I live in, uh, Fitzmo Road in Shelburne. Um, I'm also on the project for the built, the, uh, the garage. My company was hired to provide clerk of the works services, onsite representation for the town. Uh, we also did that for this building, for the high school. Um, I just wanna reinforce everything that John just said. Those are hard facts about, um, how the project needs to proceed. Um, I think it's a great opportunity to take that five hundred twenty-nine thousand and put it into the project, because one of the great pitfalls is if we take that six hundred thousand contingency and apply it to the project and go forward with no contingency, it's not only bad practice, it's dangerous. Um, the reason is that it's absolutely inevitable that there're gonna be changes. Changes come up on every project. They're, they're unavoidable, they're unforeseeable. And, um, at that point, there's gonna have to be other funding found. So, to use this five twenty-nine right now would be a great, great advantage. So, I just wanna urge everybody to think that through, thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Um, that's everybody who's signed up. If anybody is still here and would like to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, which is right now, you may do so. You have three minutes. Seeing none, we're gonna move on. Councilor Stempel, could you please do the second readings in the public hearing?
Um, second reading.
No, you already did the first reading.
Um, the sum, Town Council's second reading, January seventeenth, twenty eighteen. The sum of five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-three cents to be reassigned from the excess funds of the Hurricane Irene bond to the parking garage capital project. The sum not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be appropriated from the general stabilization fund for the purpose of performing a townwide revaluation of town properties, not included in annual evaluations.
I'm gonna keep the public hearing open on these two motions. Um, if anybody wishes to speak on these, you can come up now. I'm gonna keep it open for a little while. Ah, I'm not gonna keep it open, I'm actually going to open it. Um, now it's gonna stay open. Uh, so good town clerk. Um, communications from the mayor, town officers and employees? I'm sorry, you do have to read it again, yes. And so, I opened the public hearing at six thirty-five. Oh, we knew there were gonna be some snafus, seven thirty-five.
Well, it should actually be the public hearing, so, um... In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield Town Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January seventeenth, twenty eighteen, at seven PM at the Greenfield High School cafeteria, twenty-one Bar Avenue, to receive input on the following. The sum of five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-three cents to be reassigned from the excess funds of the Hurricane Irene bond to the parking garage capital project. The sum not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be appropriated from the general stabilization fund for the purpose of performing a townwide revaluation of town properties, not included in annual evaluations. The Town Council will consider the same on Wednesday, January seventeenth, twenty eighteen, at seven PM at Greenfield High School cafeteria, twenty-one Bar Avenue. Materials can be obtained from the clerks', Town Clerk's office, fourteen Court Square, from eight thirty AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, or by phone, four one three, seven seven two, one five five five, extension six one six three. Karen Renaud, Greenfield Town Councilor, present.
Thank you, Councilor Stempel. And now we'll take communications from the mayor, town officers and employees. Councilors, I just wanna remind you, if you have a question for the mayor, you're, you, um, should address me, and I'll be looking for your hands. And if you have a follow-up, you should still address me. Thank you.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
Madam President.
Mister Mayor.
Clerk. And all the new councilors, welcome to another engaging year of communication with the mayor. We'd like to, obviously, um, support the, um, the transfer of money, the FEMA fund of five hundred twenty-nine plus thousand to the, uh, to the parking garage project. For obvious reasons, we're over. Uh, this is, um, the first time I've ever been before the council in the past eight years to request additional funds for a project. Uh, we've had great success. We've been, uh, we've been a wonderful steward of our projects, uh, utilizing, uh, top-notch clerk of the works and project managers. And we have, uh, leveraged our projects over the, over the past eight years very, very efficiently, getting, um, numerous grants and, uh, other funds to supplement the needs of, uh, infrastructure or other innovative projects that we've done in Greenfield. This is serious. This is very serious, in that, um, uh, we have, uh, seven hundred thousand, as Mister Bensiger and Mister Dome and, uh, Margot have explained, uh, the situation. We have a ten million dollar project for a parking garage. We are, uh, estimating, uh, the cost at ten point seven, feeling that that's the highest point. We can fund ten point seven, leaving us in a very precarious position with zero contingency funds, knowing that something can happen. The major issue here is if we had not received the FEMA money in the past, I think, six, eight weeks ago, maybe longer, uh, Elizabeth can, can address that. But the, um, if we had not, we would've, would've come before you for additional funds for the garage project. The reason it's over is that, uh, as others have stated, because of the inflationary costs on this, uh, project, uh, started in twenty twelve, uh, we went through four rejections from Masworks before we finally received an approval. Uh, the, uh, unknown, um, discovery of subterranean foundations, uh, dating back to the eighteen sixties and seventies, um, caused us, uh, quite a concern in that they were eighteen to twenty feet below, below the surface. Uh, we did remove, uh, about thirty tons of stone, um, and kept most of it. Uh, that I can explain on a later date why we kept those stones. But, uh, in addition, the, um, the cost of removing all the utility poles and, uh, removing, uh, putting everything underground on Olive Street was, uh, more than, uh, anticipated. So, what can happen if we table it, or what can happen if, uh, the council rejects to give us the money? It puts us in a very difficult position. Uh, we have, we have entered a, a pause that was planned, uh, for this period, because we wanted to save money on pouring, kind of, and construction, pouring concrete and the construction in the wintertime. So, we had paused, I think, uh, we started the pause yesterday, it was about a week late. Um, this will have, stay off, uh, we will have no construction there and close down the site till about March or April, depending on the weather. Um, during this period is when we, um, contract with, uh, everything to finish the project. If we don't have this money, we can't do the, and they're not frills. We have a concrete building, uh, pre-stressed building that's put together with a crane, and that's what you get. It's open, it's walled, um, we can dress it up a little bit. We can put some money into it for less than four or five hundred thousand dollars. We're thinking that will include, um, and Margot has some samples, that'll include what's called a, um, uh, Cambridge mesh. Now, the mesh for the building, and it has some lights, uh, it gives it some, um, character. Um, we could do without that, but we can't do without, we can't do without the confidence of the council approving this transfer, and for two reasons. One, we know, as I mentioned, we're in a precarious position. We're on the cusp of the ridge of the cliff. Uh, we will not have any additional contingency funds moving into the future. Uh, if we are able to get funds, it would have to come to the council. You meet once a month, sometimes change orders have to be decided in twenty-four hours. This would be an, uh, just an, uh, an untenable position for the project, and a risk to be, to have that project put into. Lastly, and probably most importantly, and should've been number one, is that the Secretary of the Department of Housing and Community Development has the right, at any time, there's an indication that the town, the city of Greenfield, will default on its contract to request the money. Uh, those monies are about three point seven million dollars. So, if we have to pay back everything they've given us, and we have to pay back our contracts, that would be, uh, whether they're debated or argued in court, we will have to pay out of the town of Greenfield's coffers, which are owned by the taxpayer. Uh, for all the talk about the tax rate and the taxpayer, are we willing to continue to throw more burden on them? And, uh, by refusing to, uh, transfer the five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars to the parking garage project? And also, know that that money will be paid back by future revenues from the parking garage? Obviously, I'm, I don't think we should. I think we should transfer the money. So, we should give serious consideration to that, uh, not table and not reject.
I'm gonna talk a little bit about the FEMA money. Um, we had appropriated twelve million, five hundred thousand dollars for the FEMA projects, this is what it was estimated beginning. We only spent four million six of that. Um, one point five six three was bonded. We received from FEMA, three million, six eighty-seven. It left us with this five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. The FEMA money came late. We ran out of time to keep renewing our temporary bonds, so we had, uh, temporary borrowings, we had to permanently bond it. That's what gave us this excess fund. Chapter forty-four, section twenty, explains that you can use up to fifty thousand dollars of this to pay down debt, which the mayor has appropriated, and we're going to do. The balance of this needs to be re-appropriated somewhere for a project of the same amount of time or longer. The FEMA projects were multiple different levels, so some were bonded for ten, some fifteen, some twenty. So, to sit here and say, okay, I'm gonna split out ten thousand dollars, it's gonna go here, and twenty thousand dollars is gonna go here. We looked at this and said, we had a need, so I suggested to the mayor, why don't we re-appropriate this money? If we don't spend all of this, we can re-appropriate it again. So, it's not like it goes away. If we don't spend all of it, it's still available for another reappropriation. If tonight you don't vote this, I understand, we can't take this money up for another, is it nine months? Right, because we've already asked you guys, if you voted down tonight, we can't bring it back to you. So, we can't use it in March for something else. We can't use it for a while for something else. So, I just wanna explain a little bit about how that funding works. I've also put in front of you a little package about parking revenue. This is without the garage, this is just the parking revenue that exists now. This is meters and permits. We have annually voted money from that parking receipts reserve to the general fund budget. We've also used it for a few projects. I have them listed out for you, we did repaving of the town hall parking lot. We did some signage. Um, most of it went to the operating fund. That had offset the taxes. That did go to the taxpayer each year annually. Um, we make about four hundred and forty thousand. We're estimating around two hundred thousand for the parking garage, so that'll be about six and change each year that we're gonna be bringing in in revenue. We hope that it'll be even more, but, you know, we don't know yet, we don't know. So, we will be appropriating each year to the general fund to offset the debt. The current debt that we have is about a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for previous proj- projects that we did. And we said that we would use this money to offset any paving of parking lots. Um, it was for the kiosks and the parking lot improvements when we first started this project, and the acquisition of the building to where the parking garage is gonna be now. Um, and conservative estimate, when I say conservative, it's a high interest rate that we're, we're using to calculate the debt service for the parking garage, at two point five million dollars. The annual first payment will be about one ninety-two five. And then, for twenty-five years, it goes down each year, with the final payment being a hundred and three thousand dollars. That will be covered by the revenues, it will not be on the taxpayers. We were asked the question, will we pay back the five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars? Well, if you look at what we've been putting in each year, well above what the debt service is currently, we have been giving back to the taxpayer, and we can, we plan to continue to do that. And part of that will be that five twenty-nine.
Does anybody have questions, um, for the mayor? Councilor Mouse?
Thank you, Madam President. Mister Mayor, when were the underground structures that give rise to unforeseen, um, costs first detected?
I don't know, the last three months. I would just, uh, suggest that if the project manager or the clerk has the exact answer, that they can yell it out for us.
I have no problem with your team, if the president hasn't, has no objection, I have no problem with his team.
Anyone else? Councilor Alice?
Mayor, has our tax rate been seconded?
Uh, yes.
And what is it?
Twenty-two point four three.
Oh, sorry, I had, that was a follow-up.
Twenty-two point four three.
So, we've filed everything, and we need to file with the state at this point for, for that to be the actual tax rate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Pythrom? Yeah, just have a question on the FEMA money. When, when we get the FEMA money, isn't that technically, does that go toward disasters?
Like, it was for Hurricane Irene.
Okay, so, so we had to use that money for cleanup, but we have allocated the money prior, because we didn't get it at that time, correct?
Right, we had to borrow so that we wouldn't have a deficit, because we spent the money, and then you go for reimbursement, and the final payment was the one that got held up.
So, with the money left over from FEMA that the town hadn't spent, shouldn't that money be reserved for disaster in the future? If we have something that collapses, or?
No, technically, this is the money that was borrowed.
But it wasn't all used?
Correct. So, no, we don't have to allocate it to a disaster.
So, does FEMA need to see where this money is, is being used-
No.
-toward if it's a disaster?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Right, well, we, just so you know, the, um, overage that we didn't spend that was appropriated, we rescinded, six million of it, we're gonna be coming back for another rescension of the open appropriation on that as well. So, what we spent is what we spent, it's done.
Councilor Pythrom?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
We just had, uh, the final meeting, uh, yesterday and today for the amount to be rescinded, so it's just a little bit north of forty-eight million, million dollars. We'll be coming to the council in February for a rescission of our debt.
Councilor Pythrom? We'll come back to you. Councilor Stempel?
I just, I know, I, I spent all that time understanding what rescension and everything else means. So, for those who might not understand what it means when we bond, and then we don't use, and we rescind, could you perhaps give a short synopsis of what that process is for new and old?
Sure.
That sort of like?
So, you appropriate, I'll, I'll give you an example. We, um, we appropriated a million dollars for the Rocky Mount, Rocky Mountain water tank. Um, you gave us permission to use up to a million dollars. We spent six hundred thousand of that. So, we're gonna bond the six hundred thousand. We're going to come back to you and say, we'd like to rescind the four hundred thousand that's left. So, so basically, in, in layman's terms, it's like having, I've explained earlier, it's like five credit cards, and each one has ten thousand dollars, so you have the fifty thousand dollar credit limit. Close your two credit cards, and now you only have a thirty thousand dollar credit limit. So, we're basically closing that credit limit, if you will, of our unauthorized debt, meaning it, we haven't borrowed it. At that point, it's unauthorized.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thanks.
You may be excused. Communications from GSET?
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
I'm gonna give you an update on the current expansion and, uh, financial performance of GSET, but I do wanna take a minute to address the fact that we are working out of temporary offices at the moment. Last week, a main water sprinkler line broke on the second floor of our offices at three twenty-four Main Street, and there were about four inches of water on the floor. So, we had to move everything out, uh, move our equipment out, and we're currently down at one fourteen Main Street, where we will be for at least another week or two. Um, I'm happy to say that not one customer had their service interrupted. I'm happy to say that not one customer had their service interrupted as a result of this. Our customer service line stayed open throughout the entire move. And we were actually up and running in about half a day in the new location. So it's a little more cramped than it was before. But operations went smoothly. We're working with the landlord, with insurance agents, with cleanup crews to make sure that when we go back, that it will be a safe, clean, habitable space. We will hear some more next week and we hope to be back, as I said, in a couple of weeks. In spite of all that, we have actually continued to expand activated areas of the map for GSET. I encourage everyone to go to gset.net. There is a coverage map on the website that updates in real time. The areas that are sort of an aqua blue are areas that have been activated. I said last week, we're looking to expand in the core area of Greenfield. That's sort of south of the Route 2 connector, east of 91 and north of the Green River or Mill Street roughly. And we should have that entire area lit up by the end of May. That would be more than doubling the amount of service area we have at work now. We have in that area, by the end of this month, we'll be coming up on 300 customers. And we have about another 200 that have already given us deposits. And we will be able to turn on by the end of May. So we've made quite a few advances in how many customers we've had. We will also finish the month with our fourth straight month of growth in net sales, month over month. We should, we actually are over 95% of the way towards our sales goal for the month today. So we should beat it by a fair amount. I'm very pleased with that. I wanna add the caveat that I added last time. It's a good step on a long road to go. But we are on the front end or the top line, as it were, doing a much better job of communicating with customers, finding new customers. People who have the service continue to be very happy with it. I'm glad Elizabeth's here because the other main thing that's going on is we are working on totally revamping the budget and the budget process. I think that the basis for any kind of solid budgeting and budget controls and expense control comes from having an agreed upon, complete budget to work with and it comes from good communication. I'm happy to say that we have been working really well together. We talk all the time. I think that's important. I said last time, we've cut expenses on a month-by-month basis by just over 40%. So there's been a lot of work done. There's a lot of work left to go. But I think we're setting up the structures that we need to make sure that we will continue to control costs and continue to grow customers and revenues for GSET.
Councilor Stempel?
I do occasionally have faithful GSET future customers who have put in their deposit. Will they be reached out to when their area is turned on? Or should they be looking at the map to see if they're turned on?
Actually, what we do is internally, when we know we're close to lighting up an area, we contact everyone in that area and tell them within the next few weeks, we anticipate activating their area. And that we re-explain to them what their options are. And then when the area is activated, we contact them again. We also do follow-ups with the current customers we have. For example, we've added phone service and we've gone back and talked to customers that we've had and a few have added phone services as well too. So we try to communicate. We don't wanna over-communicate, you don't wanna bother people, but we wanna make sure that everyone has all the information they need so they can have a clear idea of when the service will come to them. Last month, we contacted people who were in really farther outlying areas of town because despite what they had been told, the truth is, we aren't going to be there within this calendar year. And we don't wanna tell people things that aren't true. We were actually surprised at how few of them decided they wanted to cancel their deposits. The people who did, we gave them their money back immediately. I think it's a mark of how invested people are in having a community Wi-Fi service. We just ran a Numbio study. The average cost of internet-only for people in Springfield and up the valley is $57 a month. Our opening price point is $29.95. So I think we offer, as a community nonprofit, we offer a great deal for people. I personally think of this as just as much of a utility as water or electricity. It's a necessity for modern life and I really am happy to be involved with it because I think it's a great thing for the community to be doing. All that said, we have to be smarter about it. We have to be more frugal about it. And we have to do a better job getting customers and revenues in. And I'm pleased to say we're taking the correct steps, in my opinion, in all those areas.
I just noticed my Wi-Fi says, like, "Connect to GSET now, give us a call." So I don't know whose ingenious idea that was. I was like, wait, are we connected? So it's actually kind of a celebratory thing, like when your community's turned on, everyone kind of like rejoices, like they have their GSET connection day. And then it's a really great word of mouth.
I will say, most of the advertising we're doing at the moment is through social media. Geographically, a really small market, so that can be really effective when everyone knows each other in a smaller town. So the overwhelming majority of the comments we get, both on our website and in social media, have been very positive. And that's helped a lot. So you're right, when people say nice things about it online, it's good for us and it helps us get more customers.
Councilor Stempel?
Yeah, I had a couple of people that go to my church that have had GSET put in their houses. And they said it's a whole lot better than any computer, any, anything that's ever gone on. And they really are very thankful that it's a project that went forward in the right way.
I appreciate that, that the technical crew, Bill St. Dennis is the chief technology officer. And I think it probably doesn't get enough press how innovative a network it is. It is not the same as the networks that have been built around us. It is a far more, it's an active network instead of what's called a GPON, which means that we guarantee speeds. If you buy our 75/75 plan, you don't just get up to 75. Anyone who has had internet in the past knows how often you actually get that. Well, GSET guarantees it always, all the time because we have the ability to route the bandwidth to people as necessary. So I'm really pleased to hear that. I'm not surprised. It's what we hear on a regular basis. It's just technologically a better system.
Treasure Pythron?
Thank you for your presentations. Pretty good to hear. Can you tell me how many customers we have roughly signed up now?
We're doing 16 more installations before the end of the month. That's what we have. We'll probably add five or six more because we add them on a daily basis. So we'll be somewhere in between 265 and 275 customers by the end of the month.
And again, you said that we, GSET offers internet and phone?
We do. We're just about to start a new advertising campaign. We offer what's called ClearVoice, which is a voice-over-internet protocol phone service that has just come out. We've announced it on social media. It will be an initial focus of the ad campaign. It's $1,295 a month. It has a virtual second line. It rings through to your cell phone. There are quite a few bells and whistles in most VoIP phones these days. This has all of them. We're working on, from the same group, offering a home security system that I will be talking more about next month. And we are in the initial stages of pursuing two separate paths. One is a streaming solution and the other is a straight network TV solution to bring to the mix so we can have an entire suite of products that we can offer to people. At the moment, we offer three levels of internet service. We also, by the way, are doing our final testing on large enterprise-level services. And you will see that showing up in sales and in the budget later on this spring. And we have just completed our first small business install with our true small business system. And next week, we are doing a walkthrough to lay our first, what's called, an MDU, multi-dwelling unit connection, which is a different thing where you bring fiber to a building so not everyone has to have a receiver over the outside of the building. That will allow us to go to apartment buildings in town and access a large group of potential customers that we haven't been able to get to before. And condos, yes, and condos do.
Councilor Dolan and then Councilor Alice.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm just curious if plans are still in place to roll out the Main Street service?
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. The installation we made for the small business service, the initial small business service that was offered was really just a variant of the residential service. And there are certain things that businesses need, static IPs, a certain quality of service. It's not a service level agreement, but it is a sort of a comfort level in the consistency of the service. And we felt we had to take a little more time to make sure that we had that really well in place. We've had our install running for about a week. We tend to follow up with almost two weeks of testing to make sure that throughputs are consistent, that we don't have any problems within the system. Once that's done, we will be able to go to, we have depositors along Main Street who also want to use the system. And once that's done, then we can go into buildings. There were issues, for example, with the National Historic Registry. There are buildings you can't put, our receiver is quite small. It's sort of like a hand hockey puck, really. But you can't just put things on the front of historic buildings. So we needed to have a solution that would allow us to come in and have all the equipment be on the inside. And we felt our initial solution wasn't robust enough and we thought it was really worth it to take the time to go back and get that right.
Councilor Alice?
When a customer signs up for service, what is the, I don't wanna say lag time, but how long does it take you to install their service if they're in an area that is active? Because I know you take deposits, obviously, for areas that are inactive. Is it still a deposit thing for active areas or do you schedule those as soon as possible?
No, we scheduled those right away. Honestly, the biggest delay is trying to find a day where everybody can be there. That takes, I mean, we've had installs that we did the next day. And we've had people call up in an active area and it's taken two and a half weeks to find a day that everybody can be there at a certain time. It's like all other installs, we can't say we're gonna show up at 9:42. It just doesn't work that way. So we try to give a fairly small window of time. But if you're in an area, and we have, one of the things that I think is the most promising of all is a growing percentage of the activations we have every month. Are additional people in areas we already have activated who see that their neighbors have it. We've had, for example, the Madison Circle area originally had about 14% market penetration and now we're closing in on 25%. So that gets back to the word of mouth. If people hear about it, they know that it's worked for them. And that's really the key because it's great to sign up new people in new areas. But what we need is people in older areas to keep signing up and that's what we're seeing happen.
I was hoping that that would be your answer because it's good for people to know who are watching. And I know everyone watches this program. That the more flexible they can be with their installs. You are very flexible with doing installs. So that's very good to hear. Thank you.
Councilor Mouse?
Thank you, President Reno. I have three questions. I don't know if we have the time for that. Mr. Stempel, last month, we established that you are a municipal employee who's paid out of general tax revenue rather than out of user fees. And it was indicated that you were spending a substantial amount of time doing GSET work. And the mayor indicated that a memorandum of understanding would be developed for the reimbursement to the town side for your GSET work. Has that memorandum been drafted? If not, when can we expect it?
It has not. We're actually looking at it as part of the budgeting process going forward. We're still addressing the issue, given the direction from the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, exactly how that's supposed to look. Unsurprisingly, it's another area where there isn't really much guidance. So we're working with lawyers to figure out what is appropriate and what is not. First, obviously, it has to be legal. But at the moment, yes, I am a municipal employee. GSET is a municipal entity. The exact constitution of it, we are working towards. You will probably hear more about next month, but we don't have a final answer on that for you. So I think that has a little bearing on how an MOU would work. So until we're sure about that, it's a little hard to come up with an MOU where we're uncertain what the final structure will be.
The second question I had for you, and I certainly have a lot of input on the last answer. But second question I had for you is, since you're spending a substantial amount of your time working for GSET, who is offsetting, backfilling that work in the Department of Economic Development and Marketing for all other areas of our community?
Well, most of it's still me, so I'm just busy. At some point, there are other people who work in economic development right now in the town and they will take on more of some of the work that I'm doing. But again, until that's totally settled, I just have a lot of jobs.
I think that's unfortunate. I think that there needs to be a plan to make sure that everything gets adequate attention. I know that you're trying and doing your best, but this isn't a sustainable continuing practice. But I, my last question-
I would, I agree with you. And it's not the plan to have it be that.
My last question is, has there to date been, or is there anticipated that there will be any monies from the Comcast cable contract, which historically is a pass-through to Greenfield Community Television, that has been or will be diverted to the operation of GSET?
We've had some discussions about that. I have concerns as to whether that's legal. It isn't something that we're putting in our budget planning going forward for that reason. So again, the budget isn't finalized, so I'm not, I can't give you a blanket promise. I think you'll find out. I won't be giving you blanket promises on anything. But at the moment, I don't believe that, given the contract we have in place with Comcast, that would be illegal use of that money.
Councilor Gilmore?
Hi, I'm hoping this is a fairly simple question. But Councilor Dolan had asked you earlier about the small businesses on Main Street. And I was wondering if you had an estimated timeframe for that?
I think we will spend at least another week testing the initial connection we've made because we wanna really be sure it's stable. If we find a flaw, it's a whole lot better to find it when you have one customer than when you have a lot. So I would say a week to two weeks maximum. And then we will go to the depositors we already have and begin to turn them on as well. And we'll certainly let people know when we're really available for more activations on Main Street.
Anybody who hasn't asked a question yet? Okay, Councilor Stempel?
I just wanted to thank you, John, for your willingness and everyone else in the town hall who's been willing to just be 100, 200, 400% sometimes with their jobs that they already have as well as lifting GSET up off of the rubble. And I think it's a testament to the people who work for Greenfield, your willingness to put your personal life aside. And I haven't been able to have a meeting with John in like four months and usually we get to see each other more often than that. So I just wanna thank you guys for creating success for this program because when we allocated the money for it, we all saw what potential this program had. In the world of technology that I come from, there's snafus and sometimes it's personnel snafus. But thank you for bringing us back on track. And I have nothing but faith in the future of the program.
Thank you. Thank you. You may be excused. Does anybody from the public wanna speak to the public hearing? Please present yourself. And state your name and address for the record, Mary Ellen.
Mary Ellen Calderwood, 82 Sanderson Street, Greenfield. I wasn't going to speak on the project, but I am now. The parking garage project. I certainly would be in favor of completing a project that has gone this far. I did get some clarification from Margot in terms of what the five hundred and twenty-five transfer amount is for. And part of it is aesthetics, which is the mesh. And the other piece is just simply finishing the project. And that what was presented to the planning board was a building that looked the way it looks in those photographs, which is sort of having the mesh on the side, et cetera. I'm not that concerned about two hundred and twenty-five, sorry, two hundred, two hundred and twenty-five. I'd be more concerned about getting to this point in the project and stopping it. I have no, I have no idea whether or not what Margot was saying in terms of North Hampton, when they build the parking garage, that it increased business. I have no idea. I can't speak to that. But I wouldn't want to put all of that taxpayer money into building this project and then stop it at this point. So I definitely am in favor. Couple of the, so, but the one caveat to that is I wouldn't then want to see the town privatize trash services. So to speak and support, they are connected, to speak in support of a project that may indeed bring business to Greenfield and jobs to Greenfield. And then at the same time, privatize trash services doesn't seem to make sense to me. Also, when you all are starting to deliberate on funds for public services, like public school, fire, and police, the words that I heard used to support this were unexpected, serious, and risky. And so when you're deliberating on public education funds in particular, those words, that narrative can be certainly translated into that, the unexpected cost of special ed, the riskiness of not providing those services, and the seriousness of that. So I'm in support of that, but I would like to see it encompass all of the things that you deliberate coming here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. And yes, Chairperson Nunes, I believe you want to speak on behalf of the schools?
Sure. Hello, everyone. Welcome. Happy New Year. Welcome to new councilors. My report is quite brief today. Just like yourselves, we are welcoming new members to our group. We had our first meeting just last week. As you know, we've had a couple of school closings and delays due to inclement weather. The superintendent reviews, obviously reviews the forecast, consults with G P W and facilities management, et cetera, to make these calls. We keep student safety at the forefront when we make these calls. And we try to get the word out to our families as soon as possible so that they can make adjustments to their schedules. At the committee level, our subcommittees have been assigned and are scheduling their first meetings. And we will immediately be diving into budget development work at the school committee level. So before you know it, we will be here presenting our budget to you. That is just around the corner. And then before I go, Councilor Mouse had a question at the end of our last meeting related to the Federal Street School and damage, water damage that was done there. We anticipate that the target date for reopening the art rooms or the rooms that have been damaged is February first. But we actually think that we may have those rooms open next week. And so we thank everyone that responded to that incident and all of those who have helped to get everything back up and running. That's it for me today, unless there's any questions from any of you.
Councilor Mouse.
The Green River School has been closed for a year and is still subject to M S B A repayment and guarantees. Can you tell us what the plan is for that building to ensure that the town will not have to bear the seventy-six percent reimbursement?
Sure. So at this time, there is not a solid plan for the Green River School building. However, this is something that's on the forefront of the committee's mind as well as the mayor's mind. And we are in close contact with the mayor's office regarding that building. My understanding is that the asbestos removal that has been scheduled for that building was delayed slightly. It is safest for everyone involved to have no students in that building during the time of any kind of asbestos removal. So that is going on at this time.
What's the deadline by which we must have students in that building not to be subject to a clawback from M S B A for the seventy-six percent funding that they provided?
I do not have the answer to that question, but I can get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Vice President Ricketts?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for remembering Councilor Mass's question last month and bringing the answer forward tonight. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. You're welcome.
Thank you, Chairperson Nunes.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your position.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to serve.
And now we will close the public hearing at eight fifteen and move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Before we go on to this part, councilors, I just want to remind you that the rails are now closed. And if you do wish to ask a question of anybody who's not a town councilor, you have to ask me first. This is a time for us to deliberate and talk about everything that we've just heard. And so motions, orders, and resolutions, we're going to start with Vice President Ricketts.
The town council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield Town Council pursuant to charter section two dash ten accepts the following appointments by the mayor to the Veterans Assistant Fund. Joe LaChance, Rodney Camell, Michael Bozek, Maureen Flackery, and Timothy, I don't, I don't know his last name, Timothy N. Second. So I just want to say that we decided not to meet this month and just move it straight to the council table. I know four out of five of these people. I'm excited. I think these are really good choices, and so I'm in full support of this.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favors, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? The motion passes. Okay. Councilor Stempel.
The town council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, in order to repurpose five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars, twenty-three cents from excess funds borrowed for paying expenses incurred for damage caused by Hurricane Irene, ordered that the sum of five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-three cents to be reassigned from the excess funds of the Hurricane Irene bond to the parking garage capital project.
Second.
Councilor Stempel, do you want to talk about the decision made by the Ways and Means Committee?
At Ways and Means, prior to this meeting this evening, there was a motion made to table until March. And I'm going to urge everybody to have a full discussion before everyone or anyone moves to motion. I think, again, reiterating what Ms. Calderwood said about risky, important, or she did it much better than myself, but this isn't to be taken lightly. This isn't a moment to grandstand. This is a moment to really, do we feel that this project is important enough to go forward? Or are we going to lay on, I don't know, I guess our individual principle? Mr. Moschaccio spoke very well about our intent to vote on capital projects. What is our intent with this project? It's, I appreciate all the information that's been put forward. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. But I also urge you, if you have questions about anything on this project, please ask them. Don't hold it in. If you feel uncertain, please ask. And I know that either Mayor Martin or Director Bracia can come before you and have the answers for you. So it was, it was a move to table, but I really urge that we have the discussion and move this along.
Vice President Ricketts?
I just want to say I came early so that I could hear all I could about this. I guess for me, I want to vote yes, and I want this to move forward. I think that the timing is the part that I don't totally understand. I don't understand when we actually knew we were going to need this money and then we received these FEMA funds. Why it's coming to us now, did we not know before this particular time? So I just, I feel like that's what puts us in this position where we kind of go back and forth battling and everything, because everything always seems like, we just found out, we just found out, let's go. So again, I want to vote yes, and I want to do it. But I would also sort of like to have the caveat of, let's not worry about the features as much. I want the program to go forward. I want this project up and running. And if everybody remembers, the whole time this is on the council floor, I was the one who voted no on the parking garage every single time, except for the last time. So for me to finally even be on board with this is a big thing. I'm not as worried about the features, but I will be very upset if we stop at this point and that we financially get the boom lowered on us for any reason. So let's just move forward and get this done.
Thank you, Vice President. Councilor Mouse?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to talk to councilors about the process that was followed in this particular matter. I asked the specific question that Councilor Ricketts raised. When did you first find out? It was three months ago. I don't think it was an unreasonable timeline that we were notified about that. If I thought it was unreasonable, I would have definitely asked the follow-up. Why didn't you get it to us sooner? They sent it to, they learned about it three months ago. They sent it to us at the next meeting, which was two months. My concern is, it was identified to the chairs. There were several councilors, not just myself, who said, hey, there's a lot of questions about this. It was placed on for a first reading. We had questions at the first reading. We were told, oh, we never answer questions at first readings. We don't have any information other than what we present to you at the first reading. That first reading is not a, it's not a pro forma reading. It's not just to make sure everyone's on notice that this debate is coming up. It's to get out as much information as early as possible in the process. So if there's a need for follow-up questions, we can do that. Not getting any information at the first reading. I sent a series of questions to the mayor's office, which you are all in receipt of the mayor's answer. Those were sent out the same day as the first reading. We got those responses five days ago. And that is because nothing can be submitted to the council under our rules of procedure more than five days before a meeting. But why did it take all that time to get those answers? And they immediately generated follow-up questions for me, which I immediately sent out that same day. We never received a response to that dose. Today, I went into the, the office of the finance director. She was, she informed me that even though I hit reply all on the email that gave this, with my follow-up questions, no one in the executive side forwarded those questions to her for review. Today, we're getting information which is in direct conflict with the information that we were previously given. We were told that it was nine point three in two thousand seventeen dollars with a three hundred thousand dollar overrun. That is nine point six million dollars, which still leaves four hundred thousand of contingency. That was what we knew up until two o'clock today. At eight o'clock today, maybe at six o'clock when this hit Ways and Means, we're now told eight point seven and two hundred thousand, two hu, two million. I, I don't know which one's right, to be honest. I haven't seen any breakdown of any of these funds, where they go to. And I just, I think everyone's acting in good faith, but not efficiently. And certainly not efficiency, efficiently for something that they're portraying as dire, that's going to stop a project. If it's that important that it's going to stop the project, they should be on top of it to get us answers when we give our questions in the most timely manner possible. I don't believe that this will stop this project. And I want to talk about that. We heard from the O P M director that there's six hundred thousand in contingency and one hundred thousand in aesthetic features, which is more than enough to cover this amount. They can, they can proceed on this amount. The reason why he said he didn't want to do that is because it's a cumbersome process of having to come back before the council to seek supplemental appropriations for cost overruns, for change orders. Well, that is exactly when the council should take a more, more particular role, when there are cost overruns. We should be looking at those changeovers when there are cost overruns. When there are change orders that are under cost overruns, you leave that to the executive. But when there needs to be additional oversight, because you're over what you budgeted, there should be a second set of eyes on that. And that answer was directly contrary to what he said after that, which is, I'm happy to meet with any of you afterwards. After you give me everything I want, I'm happy to meet with you. Well, then we don't have any authority to say no or request changes. The mayor suggested that sometimes change orders need to be done within twenty-four hours. Well, that may be true. We are, we can't meet within twenty-four hours. We can, however, meet within forty-eight hours. Forty-eight hours' notice is all that's required for a special meeting of the council. We don't have to meet just once a month. If there's an emergency, we can meet within forty-eight hours. And the mayor, on his sole authority, has the ability to call a special meeting of the town council. So there is absolutely no reason why any, any change order should hold up the project because they can't get in front of the council on time. I'm not saying I'm against this five hundred and twenty-nine thousand being repurposed for this in this way. It may be an appropriate, it may be an appropriate use of the FEMA money. It appears in many ways to be an appropriate use. I'd like to see, personally, I'd like to see a corresponding rescission or commitment to bring a corresponding rescission, which we haven't got. I am also committed to the proposition that we were told and that we told to the public at the time we voted the ten million, that not a dime of this project would be paid for by the property taxes. We were told that seventy-five percent would be paid for by the state and two, and two point five million, the one twenty-five percent, would be paid for by receipts of the garage, not parking receipts generally, receipts of the garage. The idea that Mass Works will come in and shut us down on the possibility of default is ludicrous. Because they need this project more than we do. This project is primarily designed to support the courthouse and the regional transportation center. These are, is primarily for people outside of Greenfield. Ninety-nine percent of the people who will park in that garage are not from Greenfield. We actually put onto our agenda, when the state said, we're going to give you five million, we put on a motion on our agenda to rescind the ten million dollar vote. And when we did that, that caught the attention of the state. And they said, oh, no, 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 keep it at ten million. We'll give you the other two hundred, two point five million dollars. It was that important to them. So the idea that they're not going to work with us when D C A M is so readily involved in this, this project to support any cost overruns that are beyond the contingency which they approved, I think we should be reaching out to them to try to get that. I'd like to see us have more oversight on this. I might vote for this next month after I'm able to crunch all these numbers. But when the numbers that I'm getting at six are different from the numbers I had at two, it's impossible for me individually to evaluate this. And the last thing I would say before I say nothing else on this matter is, the first time this came to us, it was delivered to us, oh, it's a majority vote. And we inquired, doesn't it require two-thirds because it's related to a bonding measure? And we were told, yes. That means if, if there are not two-thirds support of this council for this tonight, and we do not table it, tabling only requires a majority. So a majority could, could, we could fail to table it, and it could still be voted down. So if councilors are in support of this, they may want to be cautious about not, not giving councilors who have some additional concerns and want to treat it seriously and have the extra time, the time to look at it. And that's all I'd say. Thank you.
Councilor Alice and then Councilor Gilmore.
Thank you, Madam President. We had a lot of discussion on previous councils about this and that it would not be over ten million. Councilor Mass gave a good synopsis of the, of the process. And it's concerning to me, let me, actually, first let me say, I think the project should go forward, and I think the project can go forward. I think that we need to table this. That's, I made the motion to table it, Ways and Means. I think it needs to be tabled so that we can get some of these answers. Oh, I'm sorry. I seconded the motion to table. Counselor Byford made the motion to table. I would have if you hadn't. Anyway. I think that there needs to be a little bit more time on this, because, well, it's reimbursement from FEMA. That reimbursement is money that was being reimbursed from money that the taxpayers paid. So we can talk about how in the past, how much money we've put in from parking receipts into the budget, but we've done that every year. So we can't go back now and say, oh, well, we did that- So we can't go back now and say, oh, well, we did that because we were going to come forward 10 years later and ask for money. We, we can't, we can't do that. I, I, I'm, I'm tired of, of having information that is lacking, that is incomplete, and comes last minute. We, we see that a lot. And, you know, we, we've heard that this is the only project that's going to be over budget. Well, it seems to me that at some point, we signed a contract for the parking garage. And if we signed that contract for 10.7 million, I'm not sure why that contract was signed, given the fact that we were only able to spend 10 million. Secondly, if in fact, these costs somehow were due to inflation, we must have had a contract for 10 million at some point. Did it run out? Did we, um, give, give the option? Or was, did the contract say that it, the cost could go up? I don't know any of that stuff because I haven't seen the contract, so I don't know. Those are important questions because now we're being asked to put taxpayer money into it that the taxpayers will not get back. So we've talked about, again, that this is the only project that has been, uh, over budget. Well, I, I know of another project that would have been over budget had the council not stepped in. And, and may in fact, come back for more money, and that's GSET. So this is not the way to do it. We need to, I think, in my opinion, and I may not vote for it another month, but if I had another month to actually get the exact answers to this, and maybe to hear about those things that they can cut out that won't require the money. Because I've heard, I've heard some contradictory things between Ways and Means and, and just council from people who were speaking, that it sounds more to me like, well, we don't really need it, but it's just a contingency. And if we don't use it, then we use it for something else. Well, I don't, I don't think that that, I think that they, if, if they need more money, they can come to us, they can call, we can get us, we can call a special meeting. You know, it, any change orders that are, that are put forward, as Councilor Mas said, we have, we can get a meeting within 48 hours if, if it's over the amount of money. If we, they're going to be shut down for two to three months now anyway. There is enough money, from what I understand, to, to finish this project if nothing comes up. And that's, if something does come up, we can have a meeting and we can deal with it. I'm, I'm going to, and not now, make a motion to table, or Councilor Pythram can do that, when, when the time's appropriate, and I'll let you, Madam Chair, let me know when, when that time comes. I don't want to shut off the debate. So I appreciate the time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilor Gilmore?
Thank you. Um, I was wondering, and you probably don't have this information. We might have to ask someone else. But, um, I was wondering, how much would it cost if we got rid of this mesh that people have talked about that seems to be optional?
Could you come up, Margot, could you please come to the microphone?
Can we have John as well? Benziger, he's the owner's project manager.
Whoever can answer the question is fine.
Okay. There are alternates that were bid in the beginning that were considered, um, not frivolous, they're not special, but they're, they're things that if, uh, it's, it's features that we showed the planning board and that helped make the garage fit the downtown. When they're stripped, what you're going to see is a very plain tinted concrete structure. Those other parking garages in our region that I mentioned, they are not stripped-down concrete bunkers. They are actually beautifully designed garages. We, you know, as the local architect, I really tried very hard to make this an appealing structure. And, um, we're incorporating Bah relief into the buildings. They came out of Sweeney Ford in, in order to please, or to, uh, comply with Mass Historic Commission's regulations since we demolished the, the former building on the site. So those aren't frills. Those are things that are required to be part of the building. The alternates that were bid was, uh, the vertical aluminum tubes that were shown to the planning board are $139,000. That was alter number one. Number two is the mesh screening on the perimeter of the garage. It's $176,000. The cost for uplighting the mesh, so at night when people are looking at the building, this is inexpensive. It's $15,000 to actually sort of accentuate that feature. And then alternate number four was, uh, handrails that increased the openness of the structure, but this has been rejected. So we've already done a lot of, of value engineering. Believe me, there's been a ton. And, uh, these three features that are left are, uh, part of what we showed the planning board. It's part of making the building to the scale of, of the neighborhood and to fit into downtown. I'm very proud of our downtown. I want this building to also serve it well. And, uh, so that's, those are the costs. I know you just asked me for costs.
Thank you, Margot. Is it a follow-up question, Councilor Gilmore?
I didn't catch the cost of the aluminum.
The aluminum col, columns are $139,000. And should I show you the pictures?
No, that's okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I mean, the columns
It's okay.
subdivide
We're good.
span. Okay.
Thank you, Margot. Councilor Sun?
Yes, as far as the parking garage, um, my dad worked with cement for a long time. Now, at times, they can, um, put colored, you know, colored in, uh, the cement. That's, uh, no matter if it poured or what. So if you could put it red or whatever, you know, they can do it. And, um, that's, um, I don't know how much it costs, but my dad worked, well, like I said, about 40 years on cement. So he knows all, knew all about it.
Councilor Stempel?
Just some points of procedure to clarify. Yes, we can call a meeting within 48 hours for any amendment to the plan in the future if we choose not to allocate or reassign these funds. But it does take two meetings in order to vote on financial orders. So that would actually be a length of four days and not two. I just completed a home renovation project, and I can't even imagine what goes into a parking garage project. Um, but sometimes your finance, um, people and your contractors need that money yesterday. Um, also, there's some talk that still, even though we have these parking debt figures in front of us, that the garage, we promised that the taxpayers wouldn't be actually paying for this project because the project could be paid for over time in, um, its own revenue. And from what I'm looking at these figures, um, annual debt service is estimated at 192.5 with a projection of $200,000 in annual profit, um, or revenue. Um, and then lastly, I don't know how this project is any different than, say, if Carol Collins, the Director of Energy, was sitting before us. Because usually, um, when a town department head or some project is put before this body, and we learn that it's a win for the town, and it's also going to eventually create revenue for the town, and it's also going to be paid for on its own, we just have to have a, help me with financial information names. You're not a bond, but an unauthorized note, whatever. A promise, a promise to fund. It's always a win-win. We're always like, yeah, like, this is great for Greenfield. We don't really have to front any money because it's going to be paid back later. So I'm curious, um, why we aren't feeling that way now. Um, because that's how I see it. I see it as this win for Greenfield, um, and it will be used by a lot more than 1% of town. Because I know that everyone who parks at, or needs to work at the courthouse is dying to get into this garage so they can have more adequate parking. We're having people leave town, who are leaving the courthouse because they don't want to park. Um, we aren't a walking community, unfortunately, but people need to park close proximity to work. We have not enough handicap parking for that courthouse. Trust me, this garage is necessary. Um, and it will be used by residents of Greenfield. My mother is one of those residents of Greenfield. I don't know, I don't know what we're waiting for here. This is not, um, irresponsible. However, I do agree that maybe we should come together and have like an update meeting or a public hearing on the garage. So this way, we're all on the same board moving forward. So this way, we could kind of know, maybe it'd be no good to know about mesh shielding before tonight, you know? So maybe, um, Councilor Mas, you and I can come together and create a public hearing of sorts so the community can come out and learn about this garage in anticipation of the project. I think that'd be helpful. Um, and that's all I have to say.
Councilor Lobeck?
Yeah, I personally, when we have these thrill, you know, these fine things that came out of the Sweeney's building and the garage, these things are still stored away somewhere, right? I assume that could be put up there.
Councilor Lobeck, could you, uh, please just move a little bit closer to the microphone? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, I mean, these things are stored somewhere in, in, for future use or in to be used on the garage. I don't understand why we can't put that off and keep these things in storage. Maybe at a later date, add these things to the garage. Sometimes, just to save that money now, which is, what, around $300,000 for, to put these, these up. One's what, 120-something thousand or something like that to do it? And then there was another one?
Councilor Lobeck, do you have a question of, um, you have to ask me if you want? Or I, maybe you're just being rhetorical, I don't know.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
But yeah, I, I just don't see where these, these things can't be put off for a later date. And then they're serum storage. We could add them at a later date when we have that kind of money. Maybe now we can get this garage to be done under the, the amount that's already there and not have to raise it on the punch board. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mas?
So for a point of clarification, point of clarification for, particularly for the new members and, and even, um, members who haven't had to deal with this before. While this would likely, may require a first and second reading, depending on the funding source, there's no reason why those two, the posting for those two meetings cannot happen simultaneously. We can have one meeting, have the first reading, adjourn that meeting, have a second meeting, and do it all on the same night. Worst-case scenario, we do it in sequential night. So you're talking three days, not four days. But really, I think you can still do it within two. Question was asked, why some people are hesitant because they, they, they don't see this as a big win-win for everyone. I, it may be a big win-win for everyone, and it may not. I'm not sure of that. One of the questions that I specifically asked was, would parking receipt revenue from this building, um, cover the additional cost? And, and the town recover that money? And the answer I got in the response that we received five days ago was, there have been no projections, and there's no anticipation. Tonight, we get a projection that says $200,000. So sometime between five days ago, when the mayor sent us a response, and tonight, when the director gave us a response, we received, they did some sort of, um, projections. I don't know where they came up with that money. No, we were given projections when we first funded this at $10 million, and then we were told there are no projections. I don't, I don't know what's true and what's not true. That's why I need the time to sit down and sift it all, all through. I may, at the end of the day, very well be a yes vote on, in this matter if I think that we will get it through those revenues. I, I'm just not sure yet because we weren't provided the information in a timely manner.
Councilor Wheeler?
Um, while I would concur with some of the concerns about the way that we were provided with the information, I think that overall, I mean, this $200,000 that we're arguing over, um, for the facade elements is less than 2% of the total project. And to me, it sounds like a no-brainer. Obviously, to me, that's worth doing. And then the other amount that we're talking about is contingent, contingency funds. And to me, as just a resident of the town, I've been aware of the, the troubles that they ran into digging, the fact that they, they found, I think, foundations of a livery stable. So I'm not surprised, or I should say, I wouldn't be surprised if they have to use the contingency funds. So I would love personally to vote in favor of this now. I think personally, it would be, it would be reckless to vote it down.
Anyone who hasn't spoken? Do I hear any motions?
Make a motion to table.
Councilor Mas? Sorry, Councilor Ellis.
Sorry.
I'm going to make that same motion, but I, I just want to clarify for everyone who's here. A motion to table that fails, and we vote it, this is a vote that requires a two-thirds vote, which means nine out of the 13 members here must vote to pass it for it to be approved. If they don't, it's rejected, and there not, needs to be another funding source. What the, what was suggested by the, um, treasure collector was close, but not perfect. Though, under our rules of procedure, any item that is rejected by the council cannot be brought back up in, for nine months without suspending the rules of procedure, which also takes nine votes. Nine votes, um, it, that means that while this money could be appropriated for another, this FEMA money could be used for another purpose, using it for this purpose could not be taken up for nine votes without a vote to suspend the rules of procedure and have a, a supermajority. So if there's a hope that we'll have nine votes next month, people may want to table. If they think they have nine votes today, they may want to vote not to table. So I would move to table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, this is a non-debatable motion, and we're, and the clerk is going to do a roll. So if you vote yes to table, then it gets tabled to, uh, date uncertain. Um, and we're not going to talk about it. We're going to move on from there. Um, and then we do not vote on whether to appropriate the money. So you vote yes, you're voting to table it. You vote no, then not tabling it. And if the noes have it, then it's going to go on to a vote of the full council, in which case it needs nine members of the council to vote yes. So clerk, could you please call a roll?
Councilor Sun?
Yes.
Councilor Lobeck?
Yes.
Councilor Alice?
Yes.
Councilor Pythram?
Yes.
Councilor Dolan?
Yes.
Councilor Gilmore?
No.
Councilor Wheeler?
Yes.
Councilor Mayo?
No.
Councilor Leonovich? Councilor Mas?
Yes.
Councilor Ricketts?
Yes.
The motion has been tabled. Moving on.
The town council, upon recommendation of Mayor Martin, in order to appropriate $150,000 for the purpose of performing a town-wide reevaluation of town properties, ordered that the sum not to exceed $150,000 to be appropriated from the general stabilization fund for the purpose of performing a town-wide reevaluation of town property is not included in annual evaluation.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Councilor Stempel, could you please give a report to committee?
So many papers. Um, from memory, um, we, we made a move. Where is my, here we go. Um, so on this motion specifically, um, there was amendment made to slash, or strike rather, $150,000 to $75,000 and to insert non-residential. Um, and I guess this passed four to one for the, for the motion to amend. Um, and the reasoning and rationale behind such an amendment, um, was, I guess, from my point of view, my subjective point of view, I was one of those who voted for this, was to really focus on commercial property of val, of assessments, to really make sure that there's some good faith. I, I spoke specifically that I was not in attendance in the last three months of meetings talking about the tax, um, rate. And I think that doing something like this would show residents that we in good faith really want to balance the ball and make sure it is fair for both sides, while making sure that our, our assessments are up to date.
Vice President Ricketts? Vice President Ricketts?
Yes, I was here for this discussion. Councilor Ellis made lots of great points. I still think his figure for going down from $150,000 to $75,000 is a little high. I probably would have went down to $30,000, but you know, it's there and it'll just go back if we don't use it. But I love the idea of the commercial properties getting this reevaluation since it hasn't happened since 2004, I believe, or something like that. So I thank Councilor Ellis for this work and, and the amendment he made on this. I think it's a smart move and I'll leave the money at $75,000, but I do think it's too much.
Councilor Ellis?
I'm going to go ahead and make the amendment, but I'm going to speak on it first. Actually, I'll just make it. I move that we strike $150,000 and insert $75,000 and then after the words of, we insert non-residential. So the motion would read, ordered that the sum not to exceed $75,000 be appropriated from the General Stabilization Fund for the purpose of performing a townwide revaluation of non-residential town properties, not included in annual evaluations.
Is there a second? So the amendment to the motion has been made and seconded. Councilor Ellis?
Okay, so the reason that I made this amendment is, and I too would have gone farther, I did 75 thinking that that would be acceptable to everyone since it was, it was half, but the amount of work that's going to be done is in fact about 30% or 35%. So the reason that I made this amendment was that the, the whole conversation about split tax is based solely on the fact that, well, not solely on the fact, but mainly on the fact that commercial revaluation does not happen A, as frequently and B, there aren't as many sales to make those determinations. So commercial valuations go up far slower than residential valuations because there are far more residential sales and every year, one-third of the town anyway, is being revalued. So this 150 is to do two-thirds of the residential and all of the commercial. So we're talking about overall 66% of the town being done as well as the other 33 that would have been anyway. So 75 is a little high. However, if we revalue just the non-commercial, that will help it to try to catch up to where we are with residential. It won't, probably in reality, won't bring it up nearly as, as much as it should, but there was, and there have been many, many sales in Greenfield over the last 10 years because the valuation, actually 15, because it hasn't been done for 15 years, the commercial. Just, just recently, there was a building that was sold for $900,000 more than its assessed value. And that was a large commercial building on Main Street. And that's not the only example, but that's one anecdotal example of how if the building sells for $900,000 more, clearly that valuation is not where it should be. And I'm not saying it should be 900,000 more, but it should definitely not be 900,000 less. So that's why I did the numbers. I, I thought 75 would be a good compromise. I wished I had known that I could have gone to 30, but hey, whatever, we'll go with 75. And Councilor Ricketts, or I'm sorry, Vice President Ricketts is in fact correct that if they don't use it, we'll get it back, or well, we won't get it back, but it'll at some point wash out with either a rescension or another revale down the road. I think it would be smart of us to do one-third of both the residential and the commercial because doing one-third of the commercial every year really, really won't put an overburden on the assessor's office because Greenfield is between 70 and 75% residential and 30, 25 and 30% commercial. So one-third of 25% or one-third of 30% is 10% a year. So anyhow, thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Mass?
I actually remember these numbers from the mayor's demonstration and the split tax rate very effectively because he asked me, how many lots do we have? Because that's what we're talking about. You have to assess each residential lot. There's just under 6,000 residential lots, just under, just under 900 or in the 900 range of commercial lots. So I tend to agree with Councilor, Vice President Ricketts, that the 75,000 is far in excess. In fact, my math is when you take into the fact that we're supposed to be revaluing a third of the commercial each year as well, I think we could do this for 15. So given that, I'm going to move to amend the amendment to $30,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so now we're, we're speaking on the amendment to the amendment. This is the last amendment we can make. So we brought, brought the cost down to 30,000. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we're going to vote on the amendment to the amendment. So just to be really clear, the motion is that to a sum not to exceed $30,000 to be appropriated from the General Stabilization Fund for the purpose of performing a townwide revaluation of non-residential town properties, not included in annual evaluations. And if this passes, it needs a two-thirds vote. And that's what we got. So I'm going to ask the clerk to call a roll. Sorry, it's just a majority on the amendment and then it'll be two-thirds.
Councilor Sun?
Councilor Sun?
Yes.
Councilor Lobach?
Yes.
Councilor Ellis?
Yes.
Councilor Pythron?
Yes.
Councilor Dolan?
Yes.
Councilor Gilmore?
Yes.
Councilor Wheeler?
No.
Councilor Mayo?
No.
Councilor Leonovich? Councilor Mass?
Yes.
Councilor Ricketts?
Yep.
Councilor Stempel?
So it passes? So now we're going to vote on the overall motion. I'm going to read it again. This is the motion because the amendment passes and this motion does have to be passed with the two-thirds. The sum...
Point of order, President Renault. I believe, I believe the amendment to the amendment passed, which leaves the amendment itself on the floor, which needs to be voted by a majority vote before we can vote on the underlying article. Because the underlying amendment itself has not passed yet, has not been passed yet.
Okay, so we're going to vote, but...
I didn't think so, but I think he's right.
Okay, yeah. I don't think so either. It's okay. It seems like a strange thing that we're going to be voting on $75,000 when we just voted on 30.
The, point of order, the amendment now stands amended to 30. The amendment to amend was to amend from 75 to 30. The amendment now before the council is amendment to, at 30 with the addition of adding the
To be really safe, we're going to vote this way. This is what we're going to do. We're going to vote on the 30 again with the addition of the non-residential and then we're going to vote on the motion with the two-thirds. But right now, it's just a simple majority again. So does everybody understand?
Do you want, do you want me to read it?
Yes, please read it.
So the amendment now reads, ordered that the sum not to exceed $30,000 be appropriated from General Stabilization Fund for the purpose of performing a townwide revaluation of non-residential town properties, not included in annual evaluations.
So that's what we're voting on right now, sounds really familiar. Let's be really safe. Please clerk, take the roll again.
Councilor Sun?
Yes.
Councilor Lobach?
Yes.
Councilor Ellis?
Yes.
Councilor Pythron?
Yes.
Councilor Dolan?
Yes.
Councilor Gilmore?
Yes.
Councilor Wheeler?
No.
Councilor Mayo?
No.
Councilor Leonovich?
Yes.
Councilor Mass?
Yes.
Councilor Ricketts?
Yes.
Councilor Stempel?
No.
Oh, Groundhog Day. So, thank you. Okay, so now we're, here is the motion. Ordered that the sum not to exceed $30,000 to be appropriated from the General Stabilization Fund for the purpose of performing a townwide revaluation of non-residential town properties, not included in annual evaluations. This needs to pass by a two-thirds vote. And clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilor Sun?
Yes.
Councilor Lobach?
Yes.
Councilor Ellis?
Yes.
Councilor Pythron?
Yes.
Councilor Dolan?
Yes.
Councilor Gilmore?
Yes.
Councilor Wheeler?
Yes.
Councilor Mayo?
Yes.
Councilor Leonovich?
Yes.
Councilor Mass?
Yes.
Councilor Ricketts?
Yes.
Councilor Stempel?
Yes.
The motion, the amended motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Petition of, presentation of petitions and similar papers? Seeing none, report of committees. Committees, Ways and Means Met, I don't know if Council Stempel, you have anything else to add? Oh, you, your microphone.
I will repeat what I said. All that's really on our agenda now is the item that was tabled tonight and that will be taken up and chairs to decide a date when that will be put on the agenda. And that's really it for my committee.
Thank you. Vice President Ricketts, do you want to report on your committee? Councilor Mass, do you want to report on your committee? I assume you're meeting this month.
Yeah, CER is meeting the 22nd. We're taking up the, the town facilities used for community services. Next month, council chair is potentially taking up the student shadowing program coming up so that we're getting that back onto the agenda. Hopefully, we'll be ready for that beginning of March.
Councilor Leonovich?
EDC did not meet this month. We are meeting on the 13th of February and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any old business? Is there any new business? We do not have any first readings, any motions for reconsideration. And before we adjourn, I want to thank you all. And this was a great meeting for the first meeting. Sorry, a couple snafus here and there, but really glad to be working with all of you. And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191 or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838 and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713 or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122 or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.